Regular session of council. Today is June 16, 2014. We will begin this evening's meeting with a public hearing in which we have a speaker, Jessie Powers, speaking on behalf of HAPCAP and the Community Development Block Grant. Thank you.
Good evening. This will be public hearing number two for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, also Allocation Program. The second public hearing is to discuss, to give the public an opportunity to comment on the projects that were discussed in public hearing number one and are going to be proposed for the CDBG application for fiscal year 2014. The City of Athens is eligible for $75,000 of fiscal year 2014 CDBG Allocation Program funding, provided the city meets applicable program requirements. The first public hearing was conducted on May 5, 2014, and the following activities are under consideration for inclusion in the city's CDBG allocation application based on citizen input and local officials' assessment of needs. Activity one would be sewer facilities improvements. The CDBG allocation amount funding that is proposed for that project is $60,000, with the CDBG critical infrastructure at $280,000, with the City of Athens contributing an additional The alternate activity should the sewer facilities improvements project not be funded on the competitive level would be the parks and recreation facility improvements, and that will, the budget for that will use the CDBG allocation funding of $60,000. The Fair Housing, the City of Athens Fair Housing and Administration of the CDBG Allocation Program is budgeted at $15,000. In addition to the City of Athens, in addition to the CDBG Allocation Program, the City of Athens is eligible to apply for a competitive set aside known as the Critical Infrastructure Grant. And this year, the city has chosen to apply for that for the activity of sewer facilities improvements. The Critical Infrastructure Grant is for a single-component infrastructure project, which has been identified as sewer facilities improvements, which would improve the Depot Street lift station. The budget for that would be $280,000 of the Critical Infrastructure Grant, should it be funded by the state, and the CDBG allocation again will be $60,000, with the City of Athens contributing an additional $114,000. The Fair Housing and Administration for the City of Athens Critical Infrastructure Grant would be $20,000. All activities have met national, meet national objective of benefiting primarily low- to moderate-income residents and/or limited clientele, or the prevention and elimination of slum and blight. Are there any questions or comments? Yes?
Just a comment that I think we had noted previously, that on the lift station, what that does is, it's, that particular lift station services most of the West Side and also the hospital and Ohio University also. So it's, it's important for our effective functioning of, for the city.
Yes, it will definitely be benefiting two majority-low-to-moderate-income block groups within the city, as well as the infrastructure itself is considered blighted at its current condition.
Are there other questions or comments from council members or the city administration, as well as the public?
We've discussed this, and, you know, we're hopeful on that critical infrastructure that we'll use our CDBGs matching, and if not, I feel that we've come up with a good alternative, which would be the accessible playground surface at the front of the community center playground, so.
Well, and thanks to HAPCAP for helping coordinate, or, you know, all of this.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Any other questions or comments, the public? Opportunity to be engaged in process. Well, if not, thank you, Ms. Powers, I appreciate the opportunity this evening.
Thank you.
I do believe that we had a signing sheet going around as well, so please make sure those in attendance this evening that you're able to verify that you're here. Thank you. Moving along, we also have a Transportation Committee on this evening's agenda. I believe that Member Pappy is speaking on behalf of that.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. We have a presentation tonight by, regarding Bounty on the Bricks, and before we have you come up, you know, you need to sign in and all that kind of thing, but before you come up, I want to say congratulations. It sounds like you've sold out your tickets for this year's event already.
We have.
You have, and so, I just want to say that we're moving into our second year of this event. It was quite a success last year, it sounds like, and as you present this evening, I'm hoping that you can talk a little bit about the donation process and, and all that kind of thing, where the monies are going, how, what the breakdown is. You know, in the press here lately, there's a lot of information out there about not-for-profits and how much goes to this and how much goes to that, so if you could talk a little bit about that tonight, that would be great. And then, you know, I just wanted to say that Athens is a very giving community, a very open community, and this Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser is for food insecurity. And I just also wanted to say that I think there, there just needs to be some sensitivity around the issue regarding, here we're having this wonderful organized event on Court Street, and yet there are still a lot of people in our community who are food insecure, and I just would like to hear a little bit more about the philosophy and, and just so it's out there for the community, a thing to discuss. So are you both, Susan and Cheryl, you're both coming up, or?
I think Susan's going to do this.
Susan's gonna do this? Thanks, Susan.
She's got all their.
So just introduce yourself and tell us about Bounty on the Bricks for the second year.
Well, thank you. My name's Susan Urano. I'm the Executive Director of the Athens Foundation. And last winter, year and a half ago, Cheryl Sylvester came to us and said, "We have this kooky idea that we could do an event like they do in other parts around the country." And we said, "We would love to help with that." So last year, several of you were at the event. It was a sold-out event. Last year, we raised $75,000, $25,000 from the event itself, and then we got matching grants from the Sisters of St. Joseph Charitable Fund and the Osteopathic Heritage Foundation of Nelsonville, and they are on board to do that again this year. We take no administrative fee from this event, so the whole $75,000 went back to 18 food pantries in the southeastern Ohio region, and they purchased things like commercial refrigerators, walk-in freezers, helped fix their trucks, things that they needed to be able to deal with fresh and frozen food, which they're not as equipped to handle. This year, before our ordinances were passed, the event sold out in four days. We have about 50 people on the wait list. We're limited, I think, by the chef's ability to prepare decent food.
It's insane.
Right, without having a heart attack. The event is a fundraiser, and I, why are you having an event where you're charging $75 and a lot of people can't come? My answer is, it's a fundraiser. You know, without this kind of high-ticket price and matching funds, we would never have been able to put $75,000 back into the food pantries throughout the region. We're even playing around with ideas of how to expand the event in creative ways next year. I don't know if we'll be able to do that or not. Our expenses are fairly low, and they're covered by sponsors primarily. We have about $12,000 in sponsors that help cover the cost of the event. We pay for the food, everything else is pretty much donated, so that's how we're able to do it.
So Susan, you said, is, are the food pantries in Athens County, or are they regional?
They're regional.
So we are expanding out of Athens County?
Right, because the Sisters of St. Joseph supports three counties in southeastern Ohio, and the Osteopathic Heritage Foundation, I think, supports seven, so we have encompassed their county regions as well.
Okay. That was one question that I had been hearing from people, is that, you know, we tend to be little, our economic diversity is a little bit better in this county, and what about helping some of the surroundings? So that answers that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A question, if I may, that I have, you know, $75,000 is huge, that was, that you achieved last year, and then, so it was a $75,000 match that came from?
No, it was, we raised $25,000, and then two more $25,000 matches, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then on track, again, within four days, this year, of the same thing. So it's gonna look like $75,000 again, total this year?
Yeah, maybe even, well, maybe, I don't, yeah, it'll be around there. They may do a little bit more, I don't know.
Has it expanded to more food pantries this time?
It's expanded a little bit. I think we added two tables, so.
328 to 360.
360, but what I, I guess what I'm asking is, did the number of food pantries, will that expand this year as well?
No, there's a limited amount of food pantries in the region, and we work with the food bank to get the word out and identify them, and we actually did a grant-writing workshop with them last year before we gave the money, because they had to do a little mini-grant to say how they were getting used the funds, and so we worked closely with the food bank on that.
So are these all, are the food banks all ones that are, are registered with the southeastern Ohio?
Yeah, there's a requirement, they have to be part of the food bank.
Okay, 'cause that helps with food safety and food regulations and, and all that kind of thing.
And there's more of an assurance that they will execute what they said they were gonna do. Even that being said, we had, I think, we had one food pantry close and gave the money back, and another one had to change what they were doing, because they're all volunteers.
I certainly appreciate the fact that, I mean, it is a fundraiser, I get that, and I, I am still just blown away by the amount of money, and, you know, that to me signifies how philanthropic a lot of Athenians are to watching out for the rest of our county, surrounding counties, you know, this is, and for anyone who's been to Kilvert or to Lotridge or any of the other food pantries around here, you know that we're talking about some, some, some struggling, struggling small communities and townships. So I, I attended the event last year, I enjoyed it. I am not surprised by the success, again, this year, of seeing this go through. This is something that I highly support for its cause.
I, I too applaud the efforts and excited that it's taking place again. The photo is great, it's the, and here, the support in the community. Last year, I was disappointed, I couldn't attend, I was out of town, I'd already had plans. I'm happy that the tickets sold so quickly this year. Unfortunately, I wasn't, not able to acquire one, but let me know if there's a table for cousins or third cousins, or.
Okay, all right. We'd be happy to put you on the waiting list.
Susan?
Yes, Jim?
Can you remind us what the date is, please?
It is August 9. It's a Saturday, I believe it's two weeks before OU starts.
Thank you.
Okay, any other council questions or administration questions?
I, I also want to thank you for your support last year, because we couldn't have done it without the city help. Between Ron Lucas and Rich Capitelli and all those folks, they were just, and Paula, they, they put in a lot of hours, so thanks.
And I think that's just one comment to make, is that we do close our streets for these different events, and it's not like we charge anyone a fee.
But we're the only one that gives back.
And, and there.
Amber?
She means gives back to the community.
But, you know, it's just that, you know, I, I think some people wonder about that, "Well, you just close your city street, you know, and, and everything's closed down." So it does take time and effort on the city staff and, and all that kind of thing. I know there was a fire issue there, but that's all been worked out. Some of these other things have been, fire access issue is what I should say.
Yeah. Just the point of order being that August 9 is a date, and they'll need the suspension and what have you. They technically need to get their F permit in 30 days in advance of that, so perhaps by the Monday, July 7. So that's just barely under the wire.
It's been sitting on Paula's desk for a while.
You know, I, I too want to give accolades to the city for what they did last year in cleaning up. When you think about it, a table that's that long and that many chairs, and being able to open the streets back up in a timely fashion, not to mention the army of, of high school students, I believe it was, that were out picking up, helping, yeah. It was timing, it was impressive to watch that come together and be torn down so quickly, so.
Zero-waste event?
Zero-waste.
That's awesome.
I mean, I think that's gonna just go with everything now in Athens County, zero-waste event.
It'll be an ordinance.
They would like it to be.
Okay, any other questions from folks? We know about the suspension later on. Thank you, Susan. Okay, I have one miscellaneous item that we did have a successful bid, and next week we're going to need to talk about the West Union Street infrastructure improvements, and we're gonna need to move forward, because there was a bid, so likewise, they can begin July 1, and all that's gonna have to run really quickly. So next week, we'll have an ordinance, well, we'll discuss it, but I think we're going to have an ordinance special session to begin that ordinance. And did we do that after the committee hearings, or before?
Yes, after.
Okay, after. So we will have a special session for Union Street ordinance readings. Anything else on that, Paula?
No, that's correct. You know, it came in, but under the engineer's estimate, 10%, so that we're going to be able to award it, but we just need a few more dollars from the different funds that we'll be working with the auditor's office to determine that. But, you know, like what happened with Richland Avenue, with no bids, even with this case, we want to get this built, and the earliest we can do it is July 1, so we're asking for we can have the, everything in place so that we can award on July 1st.
And I think everyone understands that, in terms of a special circumstance, when you have outside bidders coming in, you know, we can move forward with the ordinances as they need to go, because we are in a tight-line schedule here in Athens when it comes to our construction, so. Okay, go ahead.
And along those lines, if I recall correctly, this is a project that we, the West Union Street project, we had looked at considering doing last year, but in consideration of the efforts to fix the bridge and desire not to tie up all of our streets, we pushed it back a year, is that correct?
Correct. And we may, I don't know if we'll be ready next Monday, but we, we are looking at how we reattack Richland, and whether it be, you know, a rebid of components that we do here this fall, and then just kind of longer period of time, so we'll be bringing that back too.
Thank you, there's been a lot of discussion about that. Okay, thank you, that's it for transportation.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Pappy. So moving into our regular session, our regular, regular session of city council, I am acting President Pro Tem. President Sands is our acting mayor. I am able to vote on the issues presented this evening. We have established a quorum of six members present this evening. Member Fall is not here. Disposition of minutes. Is there a motion to accept this evening's minutes of the regular session held June 2, 2014?
Mr. President, I so move.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to accept the minutes. All those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, the minutes are accepted. Moving along to communications. Are there any reports or communications within elected officials? Well, I guess, sorry, how about just regular communications, then we'll go to elected officials?
Yes, I, Reisner. I think all of us have been getting some emails from constituents and other people concerning the reports that came out in the Athens Master and Columbus Dispatch about public records and people trying to get them and having a hard time. I was wondering if the administration or anyone would like to speak to that, or if someone could remind us exactly what people are supposed to do when confronted with a request for a public record.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any members of?
If you're asking the administration, I would ask, I have read that, I'm still looking into the issues and interactions that may have occurred with the mayor's office. I would ask that you would direct reporters to me, and I'll be responding. And yes, indeed, we do all have public record policies, and I have one for the mayor's office we can supply, and I believe Law Director Pat Lang have a few statements.
Yeah, I mean, as to what you should do when a public record is requested, you should go, give it over.
Oh. Is that complicated?
Well, there are a couple of threshold questions in any public records request, and the Service Safety Director is absolutely right that, you know, there's not one city-wide policy on this. Every department is responsible for maintaining its own public records. Each department has its own public records policy and its own person designated within that office to be the person responsible for dealing with a public records request. So the first question is, you know, obviously not every record that exists in government here or elsewhere qualifies as a public record for purposes of the Public Record Statute. So the first question is, is what has been requested a public record? If it is, then there's a, a second level of analysis which involves, there are a few narrowly tailored exceptions under Ohio law for, for nondisclosure, so which a city could say, because of one of these exceptions, we are not going to produce the record that has been requested. However, in the event that a city or any other government entity does that, you have a responsibility to explain to the request or what exception you're claiming and cite the legal authority for that. That said, by and large, the vast majority of public records requests are for public records and for which there is no exception. So the best policy for this, and this is certainly the policy that we followed in my office and that I would encourage other offices to follow as well, is that you, number one, acknowledge right up front receipt of that request. So you say, "I received your request," and then give that person some idea of how much time it's going to take to respond to that. Sometimes it may be something you can go and get immediately and produce the document. If that's the case, you should do that. If it's a larger request, or if it's for a document that may not be housed in the office or that you may have to go into the computer system to retrieve, it may take some number of hours or days sometimes to do that. But the important thing is to, you should be constantly communicating with whatever person made that request so that they have some idea of what the expectation is gonna be as to when they can receive the information that they requested. A couple of things which I, I'd read, and I don't remember whether this was in the Messenger or in the Dispatch, or whether it was even dealing with the city, but I was, one of the things that you absolutely cannot do is, is ask for the identity of the person making the request. There, there's no requirement under law that, that a person identify themselves to request a public record. There is also a, something that I had read alluding to the fact that someone was asked to fill out a form. That is also something that is not required under the Act. So if, anyone can walk in off the street and make a verbal request, and, you know, that is, that is a valid public records request under Ohio law. So that's just kind of the, the brief overview of that, and in light of some of the things which, which have been reported upon, I'll, I'll be directing a memo to all city departments, basically along those lines, and going into a little more detail as to proper ways to handle public records requests as those come in. Thank you.
Auditor Hect.
I was just gonna comment that none of those requests came to my office. We handle public records requests weekly, pretty much, and as Law Director Lang said, the very vast majority of what we deal with is public record, and I would say particularly in other offices, in our office, income tax information is not public record at all. And there are severe fines, personal fines, for people in my office who violate that. There are a few items relating to our payroll files that we keep on people that are not public record. However, salaries and whether you work there or not are all public record, and so we're used to dealing with those, although some do come in that are very vague, and I have consulted with the Law Director's Office about that. As he said, you can't, you don't have to identify yourself, you don't have to say why you want it, you don't have to fill out anything. However, we are allowed to ask them to clarify if we're not really sure what they're looking for, but if they don't want to, then, you know, but if it is too broad and we don't know how to, how to respond, we can tell them that. And usually, the person requesting it will help, you know, if they can, because they want information. And so, we also are not required to drop what we're doing to respond to them unless, as Law Director Lang said, some of it's easy enough, somebody calls and says, you know, "How much does so-and-so make?" You know, that's, you know, 10 seconds on the computer, and we can give it to them over the phone. So it, it just depends, and, you know, I'm pretty clear with the people that work in my office, how to handle that. If they're unsure or uncomfortable, they come to me. Reporters are supposed to come to me. And so, I just think that there are some offices that don't deal with them probably as often as we do, and it makes it a little bit hard, and so I was a little bit surprised at that, because I hear about this at every conference I go to. It's, it's a very big deal to, you know, work with people for that.
And that's in the auditor's office, and my, just having worked with Kathy for a number of years on this, has been excellent in the way that they process their records, their public records requests. I would also say that there is a, an obligation on the part of the request store to at least state with, with reasonable sufficiency what exactly that that person's asking for. So if, if it is too vague or too broad, then the appropriate response from the governmental agency is to say, you know, "I, we don't understand exactly what you're asking for, can you be more specific?" And in, in most cases, people are more than willing to try to explain what it is they're after, and oftentimes, the other thing that you'll run into is folks that are requesting information as opposed to a record. So, you know, again, Ohio law is clear that we, that we have an obligation to produce a public record, so that's, which is not the same thing necessarily as someone coming in and saying, you know, and requesting a piece of information. If they can't identify a certain kind of document or record that is kept, then there's not a, you know, for instance, if they just come in and ask you a question, you know, there's not necessarily an obligation on the part of the person in that office to, to answer that question or to provide the information if it doesn't exist somewhere as a, as a record, so. But overall, again, just in my experience during the seven years that, six-plus years that I've been here, most of the departments that I've worked with that have brought me public records requests for, to ask for, for advice on how to handle it, have handled them appropriately, overwhelmingly so. But obviously, that's not apparently the case at all times.
Thank you, Law Director Lang, and thank you, Auditor Hect. Member Reisner?
I'm just wondering if this kind of problem could be fixed just by more in-house training, something more broad than just, I'm, I'm sure the memo will be of, of help, at least to the department heads, but getting it trickled down to the department.
Well, in Ohio law, actually, requires training by all elected officials to send someone from their office, or the person in my office who's designated as the point person, has to go with a training from the Attorney General's office, there's a certification process.
Well, I'm thinking more of, say, the Recreation Department. Okay, you have many employees, you don't know who might be at the front desk when someone comes in and requests something, they're not sure, and they're not sure, they don't know who to turn to. What do they do? And that could cause confusion, and it could create the impression that they're hedging, that they're trying to not answer the questions, not, not give you the information, so.
That's an outstanding point, is that, again, while one person is designated to do that, especially if you're in a larger department or have people that are staffing the front desk that don't often deal with records requests, you know, to them, they might just think, "Well, this isn't my problem," so they just ignore it or pass it off to someone else, so there probably should be some information out there in all the departments about, "Hey, if you get a request for a record, this is the point person that you direct that request toward."
Exactly.
Excellent point.
Unfortunately, my understanding is, this hasn't been an issue in Athens. Is my understanding correct?
No.
No, it is.
It was an issue in Athens. Yes, that was part of the Dispatch article that went out across the state. Kathy, I appreciated that you say that you post this information, and I appreciated that in your follow-up to council members. I think that's important for the public to see those.
We're supposed to. We're supposed to. I think, Pat, I don't know if you're the one that sent around that.
It's posted outside my office.
Yeah. That's sent around, I think most of us use that, we could change it a little bit, but each department head was to sign off on that. We're required to put a poster up saying that we have our public records policy available. And, yeah, I think most offices have them, but as you said, if the person who happens to be the first person somebody sees when they walk in the door and they haven't been there very long or, you know, there are very many public records requests posed to that office, they might be thrown a little bit. I'd say the most important thing that I would get out there to everybody in every department is, don't ignore them. If you don't know what to do, go to your supervisor or someone. Just don't ignore them.
It's a fire drill. I mean, you need to help. You need to find somebody to help you.
Just quickly, I'm talking about street closings. Boogie on the Bricks is happening Saturday coming up, 21st, and the street will be closed two blocks or just one?
They have the two stages, so it's Union all the way to State. I'm sorry, I had to think a moment.
Yeah, so it's a fairly large event associated with Brew Week.
No, they separated, they divorced, but they've got their own thing.
Okay.
Sorry, they separated.
Okay, they're separated, okay.
Other communications from council members?
I have a couple. One is that the Commission on Disabilities is meeting this Wednesday at 5:30 at the Community Center, which is where we, we usually meet, and that's open to the public for anyone to come and attend those meetings. As well, and this is related, the, there's an ad hoc committee that was put together to look at the Emergency Preparedness Plan for individuals living with disabilities, which falls under the commission, and that group is meeting June 23rd at 1:00 PM here in the City Building. And I really encourage individuals to attend that one because that's, that's a rather large project to where, I've mentioned before, where we have gotten involvement from HAPCAP because under HAPCAP, as some of you are familiar, there's Meals on Wheels, there are, there's Athens On Demand, there's the Go Bus, there's a lot of entities which become integral pieces to an effective emergency preparedness plan, as well as having individuals from Beacon School involved. And there's the MOU, the MOU that covers the joint work for the Commission on Disabilities with the President's Presidential Advisory Council on Disabilities and Accessibility Planning, which is an Ohio University entity, which is one of the major charges is to look at a, initially what was to be a city community-wide emergency preparedness plan, but in talking with the Emergency Management Agency Director Fred Davis, it would behoove us to have one that's large and global enough to cover the entire county. So, I should really encourage the citizens to, who might want to be involved in, in that type of planning. It'll be a long time running that we have this kind of planning, but it's important that we get citizen involvement and input into how this plan should unfold.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Another item, actually, it's more communications related to our cable situation. People are discussing that their cable for the government channel is being turned off, so they're not able to access the government channel through the Time Warner Basic Contract. They're giving, they're being given a warning and they have to buy a special box in order to do that, so they'll have to add on to their package, apparently. I don't have the specific details, but apparently they are warning them in advance that this is going to happen, which I think is probably a concern for us.
It should be, and I'm a little bit of taken aback because I thought that the franchise fees pay for, you know, some public access.
Yeah, that's the first I ever.
We can look into.
Thank you.
No, I have that, I can tell you right now, there's no more government channel post, there's a, just a one-page thing that comes up and says you have to contact them for a box to get that channel and it's, it's the government channel, it's our Athens community channel.
Cable access?
Yeah.
They're charging for the box?
And there's a few other channels, I think.
Then they're taxing the viewer. That's essentially a tax then.
Part of their fee, I guess.
They can't do that, they have a contract with.
There's probably about five channels that we used to get that, that had that screen that comes up now. That started about a week ago.
And thank you, Paula, for looking into it. Thank you.
It may require a little stronger action, I just had to say.
Sure. It's a starting point.
Okay, one more, one more thing to, to remind council members. Tomorrow is our luncheon with President McDavid at noon at, at Baker Center. And I think there's some really cogent questions to ask. And so, I meant to, to say that earlier and I just remembered to do this.
Thank you.
Now, that is considered a meeting of council, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
So, it's open to the public?
That's true.
Okay, just want to be upfront.
And again, it's in the President's Dining Room in Baker Center, is that correct?
Yes.
I think, is that on the third floor? Third floor?
Second floor?
Main floor.
Main floor, fourth floor.
Off court.
President's Dining Room?
Off court.
Walk in, turn right.
Walk in, off court. Turn right.
To the lounge.
Acting Mayor Sands for reminding us, stole my thunder. What am I worth? Are there any other reports and communications from other elected officials, anything else we haven't covered?
President Protem Butler, I would like to share the front page of today's Athens news. Was this today? Yes, it's Monday. For a bit of great news, but Athens is one of the 16 semifinalists in a contest called The Road to Wellville, and this just highlights the great work that many community agencies are doing around Athens to promote healthy choices and healthy lifestyles. And so, I just came from a meeting at the Community Center to move forward in this process on behalf of the Health Communities Coalition and Live Healthy Appalachia. And, you know, this speaks to some of the work that we are doing as far as our, our Engineers Office, making sure that we're integrating pedestrian ways and bike ways into any, anytime we do a new streetscape project, you know, looking forward into our, our Parks and Rec master plan. So, you know, we're, we're doing good things and we're getting attention for it. And so, hopefully, this will enable us to do even more good things for the health of our community and the health of our region.
Thank you, Member Conklin. Yeah, it was over the, last week, Member Patterson and I were involved with the Conference on the Local Food Movement and I believe Deputy Auditor, sorry, Deputy Service Safety Director Ron Lucas was present as well. And again, echoing those same ideas and values in our community which we're blessed to have. Any other communications from elected officials? Okay, we're moving on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 4514, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and Carpenter on Saturday, July 19th, 2014, from 10:00 AM to midnight for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt 4514.
Second.
And we're going to have a series of several ordinances related to Brew Week, which is another event that we host here in Athens. And we talked about it at length, but basically, it's a, it's a event for brewers, beer brewers all over Ohio, and they locate themselves here for, and this is the final event for that week. So, we'll be closing Court Street from Washington to Carpenter, and this is a bit of a change, it's July 19th, and this is a bit of a change from prior years, but they are going to be closing that last block, the far north block of Court Street for the event.
Thank you, Mayor Pappy. We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 4514. All those in favor, please, of accepting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4614, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26b1, city garage metered parking rates and regulations on Saturday, July 19th, 2014, from 10:00 AM to midnight for the Ohio Brew Week event, again, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I move to adopt 4614.
Second.
And again, this is for the parking related to the Brew Week event.
Thank you. Motion and second to accept ordinance 4614. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4714, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on July 19th, 2014, during the Ohio Brew Week event, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I move to adopt 4714.
Second.
And this allows our vendors to be in designated areas there near the closing of the street.
We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 4714. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4814, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 1304.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on July 19th, 2014, for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I move to adopt 4814.
Second.
And of course, with any event of this nature and live music, we're going to have noise, so we will suspend our noise ordinance for that period of time.
Comments?
Just a brief one about the noise. The, the stage arrangement this year is facing south down Court Street as opposed to last year where it was facing north up Court Street towards our more dense neighborhoods. So, that has been a change.
Thank you.
Worth mentioning.
We appreciate the event organizers' help on that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 4814. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4914, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Ohio Brew Week event, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I move to adopt 4914.
Second.
And goes without saying, it'll be a glass-free event.
Thank you. Again, we have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 4914. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5114, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07, Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions, Section 3.07.74A, Establishment of Environment and Sustainability Commission, which was introduced initially by Councilmember Fall, who will be speaking on her behalf this evening. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 5114.
Second.
And what this particularly does is amends a provision in our city code for the Environmental Sustainability Commission that formerly was defined as having five city residents to be appointed by the Athens City Council. And what the new statement will say is, five members shall be electors of the city, two members reside outside the corporation limits. We're getting a little bit broader picture for our Sustainability Commission.
Thank you, Member Nasely, for assisting us there. Any questions or comments on the ordinance? We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 5114. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. We're now moving on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 5414, an ordinance to increase the city income tax by 10 hundreds percent, .10% per annum for a period of 20 years, and authorizing the question of the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next general election to be held on November 4th, 2014, and declaring an emergency. Introduced initially by all members of council, but I believe Councilmember Nasely correctly will be speaking this evening.
I'll start with some comments. Just a few minutes of discussion since it is such an important ordinance that we're moving forward tonight. Last month, you may remember that we heard from Athens Recreation Advisory Committee Chairperson and former Mayor Rick Abel, as he presented to council the results of a long-range planning process. And we'd also had a lot of citizens participate in a public meeting at the Community Center, offering their input and comments on this long-range plan. Our council committee discussion last week centered around several options about the levy. And what I think became clear to the, to us as council members and the city administration and the Recreation Advisory Committee is the following. Several of these are just facts. The existing levy for our Community Center expires on December 31st, 2016. This current levy supported the construction, equipment, and furnishing of the Community Center, so solely the Community Center. And the long-range plan that emerged calls, I think, for support of a broadened arts parks and recreation program for the city of Athens. So, what council is presenting tonight is an ordinance for one-tenth of one percent income tax levy to support this broader program. And that will encompass expenses associated with the construction equipment and furnishings of a swimming pool, which would replace our 1972 version of the pool that we have right now. Would also provide for accessibility to all playgrounds, trails, and facilities, provide for maintenance, operation, and staffing of existing and new arts parks and recreation facilities and grounds in, in the city of Athens. So, this ordinance calls for a new levy to begin on January 1st, 2016, for a period of 20 years. This would allow, as did our most recent street levy, one year where both the current levy for the Community Center and the new levy for the Arts Parks and Recreation would be levied to collect the income tax. However, there has been some discussion that if we do end up paying off the costs of the old levy, we could actually end that one prior to its ending date. So, what's that mean for citizens and what they're thinking about as they plan for expenses? The one-tenth of one percent would be $30 income tax for a person reporting $30,000 worth of income on their city income tax. And then, passage of this ordinance in the resolution, which begins, and the resolution would actually begin next week, this is our ordinance that we're reading for the first time tonight, would allow councils to submit language to the Athens County Board of Elections by August 6th. Once submitted to the Board of Elections, the proposal can be placed on the fall ballot for citizens to decide on the arts parks and recreation levy. And I think I can speak on behalf of some of the council members, and I'm sure there'll be other comments that will be added, but we're presenting this after consideration of the long-range plans and also the recommendations of the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Member Nasely. Comments?
It's my understanding that there's been a suggestion by former Mayor Abel to include the language property acquisition, and that's primarily related to trails. I don't know if you wanted to speak to that.
Thank you, Paula, and thank you, former Mayor Abel.
First off, I want to thank council members for getting this forward, at least something that the advisory board has been talking about for a year and a half, the two years that I've been on, on the board. So, I do want, on behalf of all of them, thank you. I am concerned, and the reason we had put in our recommendation, other projects as approved by ordinance to be in there was that it was sort of a catch-all. And I know sometimes you don't like to go to the voters with catch-alls, but part of our, our concern has been that there were a number of things when we went through the plan. when we went through the plan that if we had the money, we would like to do at some point during the term of this tax. And the law director and auditor can tell me if some of these would be included, but how long have we talked about the old airport hangar that sits on East State Street that is our maintenance facility? And we probably needed better maintenance facility for the arts parks and recreation. If that's construction of a building, then we limited it to a swimming pool. What are we going to do with where this swimming pool was once we build a new one? Are we going to build something there? What's going to happen? Last year, council approved, and I believe expended some money, on the Guande Preserve and the Dollar Park. And we got the idea of trying to attach that to Camp Rotan, maybe build some trails. We can build accessibility of our, as I interpreted, our existing trails and our existing playgrounds and everything. But if we build a shelter house at South Park, which is in the plan as a potential, how can we do that under this, you know, this source of funds? Also, I've seen a whole plan from the soccer people about a facility that's there, that, you know, they would like to see the city, you know, move toward. So those are just some of the things that I, we see on the advisory board of potential ones. And that's just the ones we know of today. If in 20 years, I'm sure, there's going to be something that the kids of the community and the adults are going to want that we've never even heard of yet. And so that's why I ask for some, the flexibility in there. I know it makes it a little bit harder to sell, you know, in some ways, but the advisory board is going to try to, you know, speak at different engagements, and I hope all council members can. And we're committed to seeing this, not just see the process end when you pass this, but when the voters pass it.
Thank you, Mayor Abel. Any questions or comments or thoughts on that? Any other council members?
Well, I think from an advisory board, we ask for citizens to sit on an advisory board, and they've done a heck of a job with their master plan and the effort and time they put into that. I think, you know, we should consider looking at the language in that, in those terms. And I think if we can present to the voters out there the importance of livability and having flexibility when you're looking at a plan like that. Again, everything would have to be vetted. I mean, just because the soccer people wanted one thing doesn't mean the other people can't have what they want. I mean, this all goes through a process, and there's usually a committee, and there's lots of discussion. So, you know, I would suggest that there has been a lot of work on that, that that is a reasonable item that former Abel is suggesting, in terms of the language. So...
Thank you, Mary Paterson.
I just have a brief comment that I want to make, which has to do with, again, the advisory board and the work that has gone into this. I also want to acknowledge that we did a lot of survey work in 2012, 2013, if I'm not mistaken, in which, you know, and that, I think, gives some some history to the scope of thought that has gone into this particular piece of legislation, which is community involvement. You know, over 200 people asked to give their input as what they see are the important goals for our arts parks and recreation, which includes arts, parks, and recreation. So it's the entire package. And, you know, again, to point out, out of that plan, as I look at it, you know, things such as providing arts parks and recreation facilities that are of high quality, well-maintained, and reflect the history and culture of the city of Athens is one of the number-one goals that's on there. I also agree with flexibility, as former Mayor Rick Abel was suggesting, with how this goes forward, but also not detracting from the language to where it becomes cumbersome. I just wanted to look at, but I am highly in support of this moving forward because I, again, looking at where I think things should go and where I think the citizens believe our arts parks and recreation should be moving forward in the future would reflect that in this particular levy. Thank you.
And maybe it's more legal questions, if you want to say?
No, well, no, I was just going to say, in Section 2, the last phrase, it says, it talks about everything, and then it says, "Maintenance, operation, staffing of existing and new arts, parks, and recreation facilities and grounds in the city of Athens." So it almost seems to me that what the mayor were talking about is already in this ordinance.
And I was likewise thinking, perhaps, that the phrase above it, I know there's some question, but the accessibility to all playgrounds, trails, and facilities. So if there's a new piece...
Right.
Then it becomes part of all. And my only concern is, is that, you know, and former Mayor Abel has said, you know, you don't want to risk having it too vague, too open. But I hear what you're saying, you don't want to box yourself in.
So you're saying in your interpretation of all, that would be current or future?
Right. But it's... It says new. It does on the next line down. Where is the word new?
Right here.
Next to last line.
Oh, and new.
Operation, maintenance, operation, staffing of existing and new arts parks and recreation facilities.
See, you guys did a great job in putting this together. Especially Debbie. Got a lot in it.
There is a lot in it.
Any other questions or comments regarding this first reading for ordinance?
What about acquisition?
Comment of acquisition?
Yeah, that was your one thought of the acquisition.
It's nothing about acquisition.
And do we lean on the law director for guidance on that one? Or is it something we can continue to look at?
I mean, it's not really a straight legal question in terms of what, I mean... It makes reference to new facilities and grounds, which would seem to, you know, obviously that if we were to acquire new facilities and grounds, it would have to come from somewhere. But you've also got a little bit of a timing issue here just in that this has to be submitted to the Board of Elections and finalized by, you know, by a month from now. So I suppose there could be special sessions or something to get that done. But we are, this has been discussed for some amount of time, and we do need to have a final piece of legislation that we can move at some point.
So are there thoughts then that we might need to amend it this evening to include the phrase, the word "acquisition", erring on the side of caution, and valuing transparency, and open communication with our...
Well, I kind of heard the opposite, that we don't really need that word.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
That's what I said, but...
Yeah.
You're getting hurt to be superfluous, I guess.
That sounds like government, right?
Yeah. That's an extra word thrown in.
I think after rereading it, I'm good to go with the way it's written. It says "all" and it says "new". I don't know if acquisition needs to be in there.
But this is just first reading.
Right, so it can always be amended at another point.
If you would choose to amend it...
It goes back to first reading.
And then possible suspension if, worst-case scenario.
Well, we're...
No?
Do you hate to suspend, I mean, good, I suppose, but...
For special session, it would be more likely to have that.
We are going to have one next week. We're having a special session for transportation next week.
They have been going on recess very soon.
So leave it as is? Is that the consensus?
My feeling is go with what we have.
Any other thoughts? Administration? Paula? Safety Director?
I, you know, I brought it up. We've heard from the former Mayor Abel on behalf of the advisory board, and if the law director feels like it's clear enough, covered, and good.
Member Patterson, thank you, Paula. Member Patterson?
Yeah, I, you know, I know that in the past couple of years, anyway, that we have acquired several properties. The Hope Property, for one. The Dollar Property is another one that was recently acquired, and it is passive recreation space or place, space that's being planned for development of trails and whatnot. And so that's my only comment with this, knowing that there has been monies that were allocated, appropriated, to have those go through. And just wondering if the language is is so inclusive for the acquisition of future properties if something were to come along to where there was a possibility of acquiring a parcel.
Which, of course, you would still be able to do, just not out of this particular...
Out of this particular? Okay. Because those funds did not come out of the current levy or any other, for that matter. Okay.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I'm not saying that the current language allows for acquisition of new property out of this fund. I don't think it does. So if that is council's intent is to now add that as yet another, something that can be spent as part of this levy, then I think that would require an amendment, but...
So suggestion to err in covering all of our bases would be to include the word "acquisition"?
I'm not suggesting.
You're not suggesting?
Some seem to be, yes, we just need to...
Okay.
Either we're asking to amend or we're not.
Well, my question would be, where would we insert that? Because, you know, at the first, the sentence regarding the swimming pool, it can't go there, so it would have to go in the last section, right? Including accessibility to all playgrounds, trails, and facilities, maintenance, operation, and staffing of existing and new arts, parks, and recreation facilities and grounds in the city of Athens. So if we want to insert property acquisition, it would, I believe it would need to be in that final section.
And I guess when you're referring to "new", you're referring to the new pool? Or new, when you say "new", what are you referring to?
It says...
It says "new arts, parks, and recreation facilities".
And grounds.
So that seems to cover almost everything, as far as I can tell, but...
Well, it seems to me that it's referring to maintenance and operation and staffing, not buying them.
Then, just to be safe, put "acquisition" in there somewhere. Put semicolon, "acquisition", semicolon, and go on with the rest.
Well, that would require an amendment.
Could.
Right.
Which sets it back to first reading.
Which is tonight.
Which wouldn't move anytime, as long as we did it now.
We have to do it now.
Is there a motion for anyone to...
I move that we insert the phrase "property acquisition" to cover all bases in the final section of Section 2.
Thank you, Mary Paterson.
So inserting it before the word "maintenance"? So after "accessibility to all playgrounds, trails, facilities", semicolon, "acquisition, maintenance, operation, and staffing".
Can I make a suggestion? I hate to...
We welcome your guidance.
Would it not be more appropriate to put it, so after, says December 31st, 2035, for the purpose of paying any and all expenses associated with the acquisition, construction, equipment, furnishing? Well, I guess that would just...
That's all about the pools.
I see, okay. I see that. Okay, so I'm sorry, Member Cochran, exactly where was the...
I think you... Before maintenance would be an appropriate place. But we do need property acquisition, not just acquisition, because we're not talking about acquisition of a trackhoe or acquisition of other, yeah, other facilities. We're talking about specifically the possibility of property acquisition.
So the amendment is to insert property acquisition directly before "maintenance" with another semicolon?
Right.
Because that final semicolon, after the final semicolon, which is accessibility to all playgrounds, comma, trails, and facilities, as I'm reading it, it does mean that it's specific to the maintenance, operations, and staffing of existing and new arts, parks, and recreational facilities, but it's just the maintenance, operation, and staffing?
Yeah, no, I think that's right. Is there a second amendment?
So we want a property acquisitions? And do we want a semicolon after that or a comma? Because it has a very different meaning.
I believe it's a separate item, just as accessibility to all playgrounds, trails, and facilities, separate phrase, property acquisition.
See, and I think, I personally think that it should be a comma because the very end of the last statement speaks to grounds in the city of Athens. And property would be that, would be grounds. And therefore, not having to worry about, well, you're purchasing a structure or you're purchasing, purchasing...
Land.
Land. And it's, because it's, that sentence speaks to, that section speaks to both. And so to have it just become "acquisition, comma, maintenance, comma, operations, and staffing" would suffice, without having a standalone statement in there that speaks specifically to land acquisition alone.
But we need to clarify, the motion, Member Cochran, or Patterson, so...
Right.
I'll go with the comma. So I move...
So no semicolon, but now comma.
That we insert the phrase "property acquisition", I don't believe we need an S, after the word "facilities" and the semicolon, and before the word "mainten-" maintenance, with a comma following.
So you are saying property acquisition?
Right.
Okay.
Does that have a motion?
We do have a motion.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 5414. And I believe the clerk has the details.
You go.
And I believe we're all on the same page. We all understand the motion here. Okay. All right, all those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by same sign? Okay, all in favor. It has been amended.
It's amended.
And we need to reread it?
It's been read for the first time.
It's been read for the first time.
Okay, thank you. All right, is it time to go home and eat dinner yet?
No.
I'm missing the USA World Cup game. Hopefully they're winning. Okay, we are on ordinance 5514. An ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Naisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The particular items listed in this appropriation ordinance were discussed in finance committee meeting last week, but I'll briefly review them. Am I sensing that we need to suspend? Mr. President, Mr. Acting President, I move that we consider this ordinance under suspension of rules.
Second?
The purpose being that we have several expenses, including purchase of a van and bus for our transit system, and also the purchase of a trackhoe that we do not have functioning for the city at this point.
Thank you, Member Naisley. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance 5514. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, the ordinance is under suspension.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 5514. And this particular ordinance covers items that were discussed last week, but very briefly to review them. In Section 1, we will have certain funds appropriated. The first item is $1,022.38, and these are for return of unclaimed funds. These are for some taxes and other items that are in need of refunds. The next item is $40,000 being appropriated to the tourism fund. As explained, this is part of the transient guest tax that we collect during the year, and the money is there. It now needs to be appropriated so that we can honor our contracts with the Tourism Bureau. The next item is $100,000 to the Transportation Assistance Fund, and these are mentioned... are the, the van and bus purchase for the Athens Transit Program. And then $19,000 to the Sewer Debt Fund for transfer, and you will see down in section number two then, that we transfer that money once it's appropriated to the Sewer Maintenance Fund. And what this does is allow us to have sufficient funds in the Sewer Fund so that we can purchase the flush truck that needs to be replaced from the accident that occurred several weeks ago. And, um, that is, I believe, all, and then it appropriates the 19,000 from the Sewer Maintenance Fund.
Thank you, Member Nysley. So we have a motion and a second, correct, to adopt ordinance 5514. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5614, an ordinance authorizing disposal of a damaged trackhoe and flush truck in the Public Works Department, authorizing the Service Safety Director to replace the two vehicles and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Pro-Ten. Um, I move to suspend 5614.
Second.
So as we just heard with the ordinance before, we're purchasing, um, the new trackhoe and the flush truck, well, we need to dispose of the old ones for trade-in or whatever is happening there. So we need to move forward with, um, this replacement ordinance or disposal ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Pappy. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of ordinance 5614. All those in favor of suspension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is under suspension.
So I move to adopt 5614.
Second.
So.
Okay, super. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 5614. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Tell the same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5714, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the Ohio Fiscal Year 2014 Community Development Block Grant, allocated, allocation program residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro-Ten. Um, this ordinance in brief just has two sections, I've already read the, the title. Uh, the main section is the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the, uh, Ohio Fiscal Year 2014 Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program Residential Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistant Plan, that's the key word here, attached heretofore and incorporated therein by reference with the section two, declaring an emergency for the application deadline. On the back of the ordinance is the actual plan itself, and it's, uh, covers a lot of detail, but the, essentially the, uh, new plan has to be submitted because, uh, the old ones have been amended and requires a new plan to be submitted. So the city of Athens will replace all occupied and vacant, occupiable low and moderate income dwelling units demolished or converted to use other than low to moderate income housing as direct result of activities, uh, signed with funds, uh, assisted with funds provided under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended and as described in 24 CFR 570 dot four eighty-eight HUD regulations have extended this requirement to the home program as well. And then we have a list of what the actual plan will, will cover and goes on, so we can read all of it or we can move to a dot, so.
Member Reisner?
Yes.
I, I am requesting suspension.
Okay.
Because of the deadline, it's June 20th.
Well, then I will move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you, we have, and for the reasons stated by the executive branch. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the ordinance 5714, thank you. All those in favor of suspension only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Okay, Mr. President Pro-Ten, I move to adopt 5714.
Second.
I've already given my spiel, so.
Super. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 5714. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to resolution for third reading, we have resolution R 0914, a resolution declaring it necessary to replace existing curb and sidewalks deemed in poor condition as part of the West Union Street Infrastructure Improvement Project and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, um, I move to adopt R 0914.
Second.
Okay, um, this is the, uh, follow-up, we've discussed this over the last, uh, several meetings regarding, uh, the replacement of the curbs and how that process works with the assessment and, um, to the owners and the parts that the city is, uh, will complete, be the curbs and the, um, the accessibility, um, at the crosswalks and et cetera. So that's what this, uh, this resolution is for.
Thank you, Mayor Pappy. Any comments? Audrey, ahead.
I was just going to add that one of the reasons that the city is going to pay for these is because they will be moving the sidewalks, it's not just a repair to existing placement of the sidewalks, um, as we usually do, so, um, the city will be paying for the sidewalks and the curbs.
I think this is West Union I'm talking about.
No, this is Union and that's why we're paying for it. I thought this was a resolution of necessity for assessing the sidewalk owners on West Union Street.
That is, but that's what it is.
It is, but if you look at section seven, the cost of said sidewalk and curb improvement shall be paid for the street we have on.
We have to pay them before we, we incur the cost, I mean, we incur the costs and pay for the initial, to the contractor or whatever, but then they are assessed, just like we've done with all our other assessments.
So they're going to be assessed on Union Street, but not on Richland?
Right, because then Richland is tearing it up and not, and then.
Right.
We're moving it.
Yeah, I'm going.
If I may.
I just want to be clear on that, we've had some discussion about this because we typically do assess.
For Richland Avenue, the street on both sides is being widened by five feet, so therefore those sidewalks truly are being pushed back five feet as opposed to the Richland Avenue, I'm sorry, the Union, West Union Street project, where there isn't widening going on, so. It's just, it's an assessment.
Verification, we've had this discussion, but I got confused because we typically, the property owners pay for the sidewalks. So we are going to assess them.
As they've most recently done on Lancaster Street and several of our other projects that we've done, this is not out of the ordinary. Um, like, this is a process we've now been, been doing.
Yeah, and it does, it does say, the, the warehouse says that they shall be assessed against the properties.
Okay.
So we, so we're, I'm sorry, go ahead. So we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 0914. Um, all those in favor of accepting, uh, the ordinance, I'm sorry, the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Resolution has been passed. So, moving on to announcements and other business, we do have a motion to accept the auditors' financial reports from May of 2014. Does there a motion to?
I so moved to approve the auditors' financial reports for May.
Second.
So a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the report of the auditors' May 2014 financial reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It's been accepted. Uh, under announcements and other business, I do believe we also have information regarding a public hearing, Monday, July 7th, 2014, at 7:00 PM, correct, here, is that upstairs here? Okay, and that will be regarding the revolving loan funds for the Athens Community Center Playground Wheelchair Accessibility Matting. Any other announcements and other business? Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Anyone in our audience wishing to speak this evening? Doesn't appear to be so. Thank you, yes. Are there any committees wishing to meet next week?
Finance and personnel.
And then special session, and then should we do transportation?
Yes.
So we have transportation, finance.
City safety and services.
City services, safety. Anyone else wishing to schedule a meeting, please contact the clerk. Otherwise, we adjourned at or around the time of 8:28 PM. Thank you and have a good evening.